Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Trustees, I appreciate you all attending. Mike Koteenek is unavailable due to a work schedule, and Trustee McGee is by phone due to a family illness. This meeting, of course, the video is being broadcast live on YouTube and will be available on Facebook and posted to the Village's website. At this time, I'd officially call the meeting to order and ask Clerk Saladino to call the roll.
Trustee Augustine?
Here.
Trustee Gale?
Here.
Trustee Koteenek is absent. Trustee McGee?
Here.
Perfect.
Trustee O'Brien?
Here.
Trustee Peterson?
Here.
President Kukler?
Here. And tonight, it's my pleasure to say that we're going to have two people leading us in the pledge allegiance. Shirley Roberson and Denise Bruton are going to lead, if they could come up to the podium, and lead us in the pledge. And maybe even Russell joining? And maybe Mike? Are we going to have all four? This would be fantastic. Thank you, guys. Great job. Denise and Mike, thanks for coming back to the Village. We appreciate it, and we know that you're here because Willie's so special to all of And I'm going to go a little out of order and go right into recognizing Willie Roberson for his great efforts on behalf of the Village. I know that I speak for the Village Board when I say that there was nobody, or there is nobody, that has a better smile than Willie. He came to work every day, smiled and brightened. I know Russell's going for number two, but that's all he's going to get. Willie came to work every day with a smile. He really made everybody else smile with his attitude. Milo was telling me yesterday, we were reminiscing, and he said there was never a job that he didn't look at and say, "Let's go tackle it. Let's go get it done. Let's do it now." And what a fantastic attitude, what a mentor to the department. So, I'm going to read the resolution in appreciation for Willie and his 24 years, and then the Board is going to vote to accept that. And if anybody would like to add any comments at that time, they'd be free to do so. So, again, a resolution of appreciation for general utility worker Willie Roberson. Roberson? Roberson, sorry. Roberson. Whereas Willie Roberson has served the Village of LaGrange for 24 years as a general utility worker, beginning July 6, 1998, and concluding with his retirement effective September 1. Whereas Willie has reliably served the Village and the Department of Public Works, performing all manner of duties, including snow plowing, street patching, tree trimming, trimming, brush pickup, water main repairs, and water meter readings, among others. Whereas for the last 10 years, Willie has been an integral part of our water division and has provided excellent customer service over countless hours, aiding and assisting the residents of the Village with their water meters and their water system concerns. And whereas Willie assisted the Village transition to a remote water meter reading system and willingly assumed the responsibility for sustainment of over 5,500 water meters and smart points throughout the Village. And whereas Willie has been a resident of LaGrange his entire life and remains a steadfast proponent for LaGrange. Whereas the results of Willie's labors and attention to details are reflected in the thriving and positive legacy he leaves within the Department of Public Works and throughout the Village of LaGrange. And whereas our days were brighter, due in great nature to Willie's tireless dedication to the Village. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Kukler, President of the Village of LaGrange, on behalf of the LaGrange Board of Trustees, the Village Clerk, the entire staff of the Village, and all Village residents, do hereby commend and thank Willie Roberson for his outstanding service and commitment to the Village of LaGrange and convey our sincerest best wishes on his well-deserved retirement. We thank you, Shirley, for putting up with the late calls, weekend calls, holiday calls. You know, it was just, I know it's a sacrifice for the family, but we do appreciate it. And as I said, Willie's the best. So, I would take a motion for the resolution.
I move we approve the motion as, excuse me, approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Trustee Gale, Trustee Peterson, thank you for your first, or for moving in second. And I'll call a roll call vote unless anybody wants to speak beforehand. And then we'll do, no, just a voice vote led by Clerk Saladino.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And of course, it passes unanimously. Thank you, Shirley. Please give Willie our best. We do appreciate it. He's fantastic addition, and we're looking forward to seeing him around the Village. Thanks. At this time, we're going to have two appointments to the Design Review Commission. We're going to handle them individually since they do need the Board approval. So I hereby submit to transfer Kurt Volkman from the Environmental Quality Commission to the Design Review Commission. Mr. Volkman has served on the EQC for one year and has indicated his willingness to serve as a member of the Design Review Commission for a term to expire in 2023. I would ask for a motion for his approval.
I move for the appointment of Kurt Volkman onto the Design Review Commission.
Thank you, Trustee Gale. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Any comments? Seeing none, I'll have a voice vote on that, Clerk Saladino.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And of course, that passes unanimously. Second appointment, happy to appoint, to fill a vacancy on the Design Review Commission, I hereby submit the appointment of Lindsay Hansen for your approval. Ms. Hansen resides at 301 Brainerd. I think that may be the old address, but she resides in LaGrange, I know for sure, and has indicated her willingness to serve as a member of the Design Review Commission for a term to expire in 2024. Ms. Hansen's resume was submitted under separate cover. She's very well-qualified and would make a great addition to the Design Review Commission. So I would ask for a motion for her appointment.
I would motion to approve Lindsay Hansen.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale. Any comments? Seeing none, I'd ask Clerk Saladino for a voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Of course, it passes unanimously, and thank you very much. Continuing on, obviously, yesterday was a torrential rain. Unfortunately, homes were flooded in LaGrange. It's a continuing problem. The Board recognizes that it's a continuing problem, and it is and remains one of our top priorities. I do want to thank Public Works for coming out on a Sunday. I know they were full-staffed, and, you know, as I said when we were talking about Willie, it's, you know, they come in on a Sunday even though they had plans with their families and things of that nature to do their best for our Village, and we do appreciate their efforts in that regard. We also understand that homeowners suffer damage. Pictures ruined, basements flooded, appliances ruined, and it's frustrating and tough. And again, we're continuing to work to mitigate those losses. Sunday storm at one time in a brief, I think, 90 minutes, and Rick, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, we had over 1 and 3/4 inches of rain. It really, our system just isn't designed to handle that much rain in that short period of time. There will be an expansion, hopefully soon, but until that happens, these short, heavy rainfalls are problematic. I've continued to meet with a lot of our elected leaders. I had the opportunity to meet with both Congressman Sean Caston on several events this weekend, as well as at one event Cook County Board President Tony Breckwinkle. Whenever I meet any of our regional leaders, I tell them that LaGrange's need is for funding, for flood relief. They both know that, both said that they've heard from Drive LaGrange, both said that they've studied the issue and are looking for funding on that issue. I also, on Saturday, met with Congresswoman Newman, again, to discuss the funding that she's hoping to secure for us. She again said that the funding is there. It needs the Senate approval. She's hopeful that it will be approved. We're hopeful that we will get the money, and she said we should know more in approximately six weeks. That's the good news. Unfortunately, there's some bad news. And the bad news is that the trial date did get continued. It got continued from September 19th to September 27th. It's a relatively short continuance, but I understand, and the frustration that anybody when they're hearing the news that the trial got continued. The trial was continued on the judge's motion. It was because of the judge's schedule. And so, again, it's my hope that it will not be continued again, although I know that the attorneys are in court tomorrow. They're supposed to be exchanging their pre-trial documents. So, it's my hope, and sincere hope, that the trial goes forward on September 27th. And once that moves, once we know where we're at with that, then we, the other pieces, we can start looking, what's the next steps, and we'll look at that. I'm sure that we'll hear from some residents. I received emails indicating that they did want to come and address the Board, and we welcome their comments at the appropriate time. I do want to thank the members of the Community Diversity Group. They celebrated their 31st year of conducting a rally. It's a weekend-long event. It started with a movie Friday night, Driving While Black. It concluded with a great event here. I know that Trustee Peterson, Trustee Augustine, Trustee Gale were able to attend, and I'm sure they would say that it was a well-attended, every seat was filled, great event, and just a perfect opportunity to show that LaGrange is better when we work together. We have differences in diversity, and that's wonderful, but when we come together is when we're at our best, and I appreciate them putting on the events. It was also the West End Art Festival. It was a great day on Saturday. It was a lot of fun. It was well-attended. The artists were fantastic, and the different booths, food, beer was wonderful. Unfortunately, the rain did end it on Sunday. We feel bad for the artists who obviously really need those sales for their livelihood. We're hopeful that they'll all come back next year and maybe even sell more to the people that didn't have the opportunity to purchase on Saturday, or Sunday, take it. We thank the LGBA for their hard work on that event. We also had the Rain Barrel Auction, and Chief Favre did a rain barrel. If anybody noticed, it was the fire hydrant, the very red fire hydrant with the chains. It was one of the top sellers, and he is a true artist, and we appreciate his efforts in that regard. I thank the staff, both the police and Public Works, for their hard work that weekend while the art fair was going on, and then on Sunday when they had to break down the art fair because of the rain. And thanks to all the residents that supported it. Patriot Day was 9/11. I had the opportunity to go to Countryside. Again, Sean Caston, the Congresswoman, was there for a nice ceremony. We remember the people that lost their lives on that day. We remember that terror attempted to disrupt and take over the country, but good conquered evil. The country came together from coast to coast, unified, and said that we will not let acts of terror change us, and that's a great thing. It's also an opportunity to recognize the men and women in our police and fire departments. They always put the residents, the guests, first, truly put their lives on the line, and 9/11 showed that. I sure can all picture the firemen climbing the stairs, knowing that they're going into danger. And it's, again, on these things, when we recognize them, we really are recognizing their whole family, because it's a sacrifice when you know that your loved one is going into the line of duty and that nature. So thank you to them, and we're happy to recognize them on Patriots Day. Today is also Policewoman Day, National Policewoman's Day, and we had something on our Facebook that alerted me that it was Policewoman Day. I personally think a lot of policewomen, my grandmother was one of the first Chicago policewomen. My mother's father died when my mother was seven, and she had two siblings, so my grandmother was a single woman with three children under 10 and needed to find a job, and she was hired as a Chicago Police matron because women were not allowed to be police officers at the time. But while she was working with Chicago, policewomen did get the opportunity to join the force, and she was, Rose Hansen Noonan was one of the, Rose Noonan Hansen was one of the first in that first class of policewomen. So she worked as a police officer until her retirement, and I know that it was important to my family. So I know in our police department, we have Tammy Madden, who's a Deputy Director of Administrative Services. We also have a female sergeant, and we have three officers that are female, including one that's in the academy. We look for diversity in all of our departments. We're proud of the diversity in the police department, and we want to recognize our five employees in the police department on National Policewoman Day. And with that, I think I can move it to the manager's report.
Thank you, President Kukler. I have two brief updates this evening. The Village's contractor began work on Phase 2 of the Downtown Streetscape Project last week. Phase 2 of the Streetscape Project continues the removal and replacement of all remaining brick pavers, select sidewalk areas, and a refresh of all crosswalks within the Central Business District. The work is phased to minimize impacts on downtown businesses and pedestrian activity. A detailed project map showing the planned work areas by phase is available on the Village website, and if you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Department of Public Works at 708-579-2328. And the LaGrange Area Historical Society's virtual 2021 Home and History Tour is scheduled to take place on September 18th. The Historical Society this year is also hosting an in-person sneak peek preview of the tour with opportunities to meet the owners of the homes that are featured on September 15th. For more information and to register, please visit the Historical Society website at lagrangehistory.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Village Manager Charity Jones. We appreciate all your hard work, and we know that it's a lot, so thank you very much. At this time, I would ask Clerk Saladino to read the items on our agenda.
Matters on the consent agenda will be considered by a single motion and vote because they have already been considered fully by the Board at a previous meeting or have been determined to be of a routine nature. Any member of the Board of Trustees may request that an item be moved from the consent agenda to current business for separate consideration. Item A: Approval. Purchase of Lucas III CPR Device. Item B: Amendment. Parking and Compliance Ticket Tracking Software. Item C: Ordinance. Amending Chapter 111 of the LaGrange Code of Ordinances Regarding Possession of Alcohol by Minors. Item D: Resolution. Designating a Representative to the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency. Item E: Minutes of the Village of LaGrange Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting, Monday, August 22, 2022. Item F: Consolidated Voucher 220912. And nothing on the current business agenda.
Thank you, Clerk Saladino. At this time, I would ask if anybody in the audience has any comments, questions, thoughts on matters that are on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, I will ask, or move for the consent agenda and ask if there is a motion and a second for the items under the consent agenda.
I move for acceptance of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Trustee Gale.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Any comments, and I'll let Trustee Augustine start.
Yes, as previously stated, I recuse myself from voting on any agenda items related to the Village prosecutor. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments before we have a roll call vote? Seeing none, I'd ask Clerk Saladino for a roll call vote.
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee Gale?
Aye.
Trustee Koteenek is absent. Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
And the current, or the consent agenda passes unanimously. I meant to add one, so I'll go out of order and add another thing under the President's report, and that is Wednesday, the Citizens Council is having a meeting. All are welcomed, all are encouraged. The Citizens Council is looking for residents that are willing to join, learn more about the Village operations, learn more about the library in the Park District, as well as be part of the process of slating candidates. No experience is necessary, and it's an informative, enjoyable event, so if you're available, please come here on Wednesday night. If anybody can correct me, I think it's 7:30, but it might be 7:00. Could be 7:00. So, I know it's on their webpage. I know you're welcome. If you do want to, if you're interested, feel free to email me, and I'll confirm the correct time, but assume it's 7 o'clock this Wednesday, and thank you for considering Moving on to public comments regarding matters not on tonight's agenda.
There. Now you can hear me. So, okay. Becky Lorenson, resident of LaGrange and a member of the Community Diversity Group. I just want to give my heartfelt thanks to the Village for your support of our Diversity Days weekend, and in particular to Mark Kukler, Beth Augustine, Peggy Peterson, Lou Gale, who all were able to attend the event, to Chief Wardlaw, and for, who was able to attend, and also Chief Favre for encouraging your officers to come. We saw several of the police officers and fire officers here and really appreciated your support, so thank you.
Thank you, Becky, and thank you for all you do, and it was a great event because of yours and your team's efforts, so thanks very much. Anyone else?
Hi, everyone. I'm Laura West, 140 Sunset, LaGrange. Thank you for having me here tonight. A couple of my neighbors are with me as well, and hopefully you'll hear from them. Last night, we can add it to the list of the dates that I referenced at the last meeting, making it now the sixth occasion that we have had overland flooding to what I would describe as an extreme nature, putting our property at a ton of risk. I don't think we should live this way, and I'm not sure if everybody agrees with that or disagrees with that, and I know there's a lot of debate as to the cause and the reasons for the problem, as well as the solutions to the problem. But one thing I know is that I am incredibly familiar with this corner, Sunset Elm, and this property in particular. I grew up in this house. I knew exactly what I was getting into when I bought this house, and something has changed drastically in the past three years, and this is not a property that anybody should be able to live in and reside in in this state, with the Village doing nothing to address this corner. Residents all throughout the Village are putting $10,000, $20,000, $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 plus into their houses that they have already paid a lot of money for to live in and enjoy a community like LaGrange. On top of that, property is being destroyed. Kids' Christmas presents are being thrown out. Rugs are being ripped up. Furniture is being put out on the curb, nonstop, adding to the damage financially and emotionally constantly. Anytime I bring this up, there's sometimes responses, sometimes not. There's almost always excuses and reasons that X, Y, and Z cannot be done. I have been told that people are working on it, people care a lot, there's engineers. What I've not been told is what are the plans? What is the Village doing to address this problem? We can't wait anymore. We know there's a trial coming up. We know there's a lot of things in a lot of areas of LaGrange coming up. We have gotten so lucky so far in 2022, and I don't think water touching our house should be considered lucky, but it could have been way worse just because of the weather. Who knows what will happen at the rate that it is keeping up, and it is not good. It was addressed earlier in the meeting that our infrastructure cannot handle a rain like Sunday, which was by no means the worst rain that we can expect throughout the year. We need to fix our infrastructure. We need a plan. I have been coming to these meetings. I've been talking. I personally, in my neighborhood, will have to figure out a more aggressive and a more forward plan for us to get our points through until we hear some sort of plan, until we see it on the agenda, that the Village Board is working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. West.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Smith. I live on Sunset as well, just down from Laura, and I echo her sentiments and the frustration, but I think another frustrating piece is every time we do come to the Board meetings, I think the overall, two words I hear most are "hope" and "soon," and so, two very vague words that, to me, don't define anything about a strategic plan, anything about a group looking to prioritize, itemize what we're doing. Yes, the lawsuit is happening. We've heard about that since I came to my, I don't know, the fifth meeting a year and a half ago. That timing is undetermined. It will be a pushback again, and until then, we don't do anything. We can't do anything. It's "soon," it's unknown. Well, I look forward to the day where we can say, "Here's the plan. If this doesn't happen, or if this does happen, A, B, C, D, E could potentially happen. Here are potential solutions that we're paying, I don't know, thousands of dollars to this engineer who, I truly, I don't know. Maybe, I'd love to be informed by someone on this Board of what value they're bringing besides what's happening with the lawsuit and with potential things south of 47th. I'd love to hear what's happening north of 47th. I'd love to hear it "soon." I'd love to hear what, who is charged, who's tasked with that, some kind of definition behind it. I think a business operates in a strategic plan. This is a big problem to LaGrange. I would say it is the problem to us. As Laura's saying, we're losing value on our block. I think our block has a stigma. So if I can't sell my house, who's, who's, who's going to... Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Gall. I live on the same block at 100 Sunset, and we moved here in June of 2019, and within a year, we experienced a short, aggressive rain that flooded our entire basement, and we had to pay thousands upon thousands of dollars to completely fix and repair our basement. This is such a special community, and we are so lucky to live here, and I am appalled by the inaction. On Sunday, we couldn't even drive through on Sunset and Elm. Like, this is just completely unbelievable. The property taxes that we pay here, I mean, at this point, I couldn't, I have friends from the city looking for places to live in the suburbs. I couldn't even tell them to come live here because of this unbelievable issue. And so this is my first village meeting. I have come here. Laura has dragged me here. I am here to support my block and this community, but ultimately, Laura reports back after every village meeting, and nothing is done. And so we are coming en masse here, pleading for some action for our community and for our block. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming. We do appreciate it. And thank you all for your comments, questions, and we understand your frustrations. To say nothing's been done, I don't know that that would be fair. We have hired engineers to look at the solutions. There is no simple solution. There's no quick fix that's going to address Sunset and Elm. The Mars Project is the project that will eventually address the situation. We'll continue to meet with the experts, world-renowned experts, the best experts we can find, to see what can be done. In the meantime, we have our Director of Public Works, Rick Colby, and his staff that is willing, and perhaps not just to the people who spoke here, but really to the people listening at home, that if you have any questions, concerns, they will come out to your property and talk to you about potential fixes that could be done by the homeowners, and they'll do that. We also, this year, instituted the program where 50% of overhead sewers, check valves were paid. The program was successful. All $50,000 was accounted for, it was used. We're anxious to hear how those homeowners end up doing with this. Hopefully, it provides them relief, and it will be a project that we continue to do, and we'll continue to work on those issues. So thank you again for coming out, and at this time, I would ask if there are any trustee comments. Trustee Gale?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just follow up on the issue of flooding. You know, disappointed as I'm sure everybody else is, that the trial date's been extended, but thankfully, just, you know, another eight days, I think, so I'm looking forward to, through that process, we'll get some clarity with respect to what we're allowed to do with that project. But then I think what we do need to do is to look at what's next after that and start preparing for, you know, for what are the, what are the projects we want to undertake next? Because we've, 50th Street, we're ready, right? I mean, that's ready once we can do it. So what are the next ones, and let's get the details ready for that, you know, the what, the when, the how, get those lined up, and then let's have that discussion. Hopefully, we can do that in the next, you know, few months, again, as we get that clarity. So, thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Gale. I do think that's a good idea. Trustee Augustine?
Yes, I've been listening to you guys for a while, and other people for years. We are. We have a plan. Most of the village knows what the plan is for the 50th Street flooding, and the areas that will be served by that fix eventually, but no one knows what the fix is for the rest, what's happening when. You guys aren't asking for this to be fixed tomorrow. You know it's big, you know it's expensive, but you're asking, what is it and when? And can, I see something in writing, or something, again, talked about in a meeting that says this is happening, and I have been talking about it for a while. I think I've got some support on that. I think tonight, it seems like there's a lot of other people interested in it, but we will put that together. We will address all the areas that need addressing so that everybody feels that eventually this is the plan, to improve, fix, revise, whatever we can do, re-engineer, to fix these areas, because this is, this is no way to live, and to keep coming here and saying the same things and hearing the same things from us is painful, but it's helping, and we'll have something by the next meeting. I will.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Seeing no other comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:13.
So moved?
And a second.
Second.
Thank you, trustees. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Of course not. Thank you.